General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Please stand, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, wait a minute, the wrong side is coughing.
We're getting it from both ends, watch it.
Madam Clerk?
Under appointments, the Board of Elections that was scheduled at 9:30 will not be here. 10:15?
Do we want to? Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
Do you want him to explain it?
Yeah, do we want to address the issue? Yeah, I think we should.
Board of Elections, Jim?
Commissioners, please bear with me, I have a cold. I spoke with the Board of Elections earlier this week, and because we were in Columbus and I was out, I was unable to get back to you or the clerk to let you know that the Board of Elections won't be coming in this morning, because I'm pleased to inform you that we have successfully reached terms and conditions on the building on 254. We're, we need to ink the deal and do the formal paperwork, but it fits within the parameters that the Board wanted too for purchasing that property. I believe we got it at a very fair price for the county. There's some technical language that needs to be worked out to make the purchase a little bit more advantageous to the seller, timing on when we take control of the property and some tax consequences that are of no significance to us but important to the other side, and we're working those details out right now. But we've been able to bring it in within the $1.5 million that this Board authorized. I think it's going to be good for the county, the Board of Elections, and we're going to start the process of trying to get into the building very shortly and get the T-1 lines and everything, and I think we got a very cooperative relationship with Rowland Enterprises. They've shown a real desire to work with the county, and I think this is going to be an excellent location for the Board of Elections.
Can we work out some kind of agreement that we could have the Board of Elections move in there as soon as, like immediately, and still resolve his problems?
I believe that's going to be attainable.
And this is under the cost that it would cost us to build new? And everything is in there, all the technology that is needed for computers and all their equipment?
Well, I believe that it adequately meets their needs as the Board of Elections, the four directors have indicated to this Board in previous discussions. With regard to the specifics, I don't know that, but I believe that we've deferred to the Board of Elections folks, and they believe it does meet their needs.
I talked with Marilyn Jacobic yesterday, and she agrees that this is what they need, and they're all satisfied with it.
So I will work with Rowland Enterprises with respect to gaining access to the building as early as possible. I don't think there's going to be a big problem with that.
Jim, how are we going to finance this?
Well, initially, I'd like to see the general fund do a, in advance, to do the purchase of $1.5 million. We can collect those dollars from some project accounts that we have for future works. We have money set aside for this building and some other anticipated needs. Do that as an advance, and then we probably should go out and get a short-term $1.5 million bond, and then do a drawdown on that through our bond retirement fund. This way, the general fund will, in effect, continue to make the same kind of payments it's been making in rent, and we won't be out that cash.
Do we have to do that? Do we have to go for a bond?
Well, I would highly recommend that we go for the bond. We have some inside milage dollars that we're directing to operations right now. I'm not comfortable with that, because we have some excess dollars in bond retirement that we need to use for bond retirement purposes. So we can sit down and talk about the way we want to get it financed, but that'll help expedite getting a drawdown on that, those surplus funds in the bond retirement, and allow us to return that inside milage to debt service rather than operations.
Well, I was just wondering, because if we go for a bond, it's still going to come out of the general fund. The payment is going to come out of the general fund, so, and then there's going to be interest on that. So if we can somehow figure out how to pay this through the general fund and not go out and borrow money, I think we would be better off.
Well, in some respects, obviously, you could be better off paying cash, but given the economics of the revenue versus our operating costs and the slowdown that we see ourselves, and it probably would behoove us to maintain a cash-positive position and do debt service with callables that, so should things come, should a recovery come quicker than we think, then we call our notes and pay them off. But if we pay cash for the building, we really can't later on go back and say we want to finance this building and get money for operations.
Exactly.
So the option is, it would cost us a few dollars to finance it now, but then we'll just pay it off should things look better in the future. So I would recommend retaining your cash by financing, and then make sure that we, when we do the financing, we choose options that give us the ability to pay it off. Last thing I want to see is isn't a 20-year non-callable level debt service.
I thought about that, too. But that's something that we can talk a little bit more about.
Sure, absolutely. I'll have to sit down and talk with John and then the Board on this, but I just think right now retaining cash while our revenues are dipping a bit is in our best interest.
Yeah. Betty, what's your thoughts?
Oh, I think it sounds wonderful, and I'm excited about it, and I think that closes a chapter that we've been working on for a long time.
So do we need a purchase agreement?
No special resolution or anything is needed by the Board right now. Commissioners, you made your authorizations at last board meeting, and we're working within those guidelines. It'll eventually come back to you, but right now, we're just doing all the legal work and things that we have to do, and we'll bring it back to you when it's more formalized for this Board to sign off on.
We lost our Commissioner.
Yeah, are you done talking about Board of Elections?
Pardon me?
Is the discussion over?
Oh, is that why he left? So he's not going to vote on this issue?
Well, we're not going to vote on it today.
No, I know, but I mean, when we do decide.
I can't answer that.
Okay, you can call him back in. Okay, next.
At 10:15, Howard Reynolds Supervisor Office Services will give an update to the Board and inform the public on the department. At 10:30, Larry Allen and Budzeman will give an update to the Board and inform the public on this department. 10:45, Ernie Smith, IT Director, to give an update to the Board and inform the public on that department.
Before we move on, I wanted to say, that's why I whispered, I had to recuse myself due to a possible conflict, but I didn't want to interrupt what you're talking, so.
I just wondered why you disappeared.
I was told this morning that we weren't going to be discussing it, so, well, no, it's not your fault. My apologies.
Sorry. Under resolutions, Job and Family Services bills?
Some move.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, with exception to number 24, 24.
What was it?
$18,000 worth of recycling carpeting for the auditor's office.
For the auditor's office?
Yes.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Advances, repayments?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
I had some. I had a question. There was toilet tissue on here for $10,500 for two months. That's the sheriff's department. That's a lot for two months.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I can't exactly answer that, but I can tell you that it's needed. I believe the bond's here. That's something that's purchased all the time, and we have four inmates of them, so we use a lot of pressure.
That sure is a lot.
And it's supplied for, what, two months, I think?
Yeah.
So we did this item out last year for this year.
I mean, is this an era that's just for two months?
I have the rental due, but I can't.
You have the number, Mary Lou?
Uh, yes. It's 1737.
Thank you. It's a blanket purchase order.
Yeah, for two months.
I know, three months, October, November.
October, November, and December is for three months.
It's December 3rd.
No, December 2003.
Oh, okay. They're crazy numbers.
Yeah, it's their blanket, and like I said, we bid those items out every year, so that was, basically, we really didn't have to put it on a requisition, because we gave them a dollar amount that was awarded to most sales for that, for 2003.
Well, that's the first time I've seen toilet tissue like that.
Yeah.
And then 1711, for the dog pound cage signs. I'm wondering if those could be purchased through Solid Waste, recycled signs.
I bet you they could be. I wanted those cage signs for some time here due to liability issues out there. You know, it's like, don't stand on the top step of this ladder, stupid, you may fall off. Well, you know, it's putting your fingers through the grates out there, but I bet you we can order them through Solid Waste. Why don't we hold up on that? We'll send it over to Dan. Yvonne, would you?
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
That may be a unique way of using some of those funds. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thanks. And then I would make an exception to 1683, and that's Clemmons and Nelson.
Aye, with an exception of 1745.
What was that?
Dead before it's over, 1745.
1745 dash 13.
What is that?
Is that out of sequence, or?
Yeah. It's the, um...
On the first page. It's on the first page, I need the Commissioners.
Let me see what we've got here. Is that on the first page?
Yeah, first page, I need the Commissioners.
Last one on the bottom. Thank you. We are holding that one, are we not? That dog race? The dog cage? Okay, thank you. Also move for travel expenses.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Bills?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Some move.
Second. Discussion.
Commissioners, I will be asking for a brief executive session to deal with a disciplinary issue at the county home.
It's not one of the issues on? Any addition to those that are listed?
I haven't seen the sheet, Commissioner. No, Commissioner, if you're satisfied with that, then I won't need the executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye, with the exceptions of four and five, I am abstaining on those two items.
Under the Commissioners, number 10, approve Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes of September 14th, 8th, and 11th.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Award bids to various vendors for food items to be supplied to Golden Acres Nursing Home and Lorraine Medina Community Base Correctional Facility for the period of January 1st, 2004 through June 30th, 2004.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, award contract to Geisel Plumbing, Elaria, for emergency home repair assistance for Teresa Ferguson at 41726 Overland Road, Carlisle Township, to replace her hot water tank in the amount of $444. This will be paid from account 126022501450422, 2002 CDVG Formula Activity.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized closeout, paying back general fund advances and salary reimbursement for Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, and Community Housing Improvement Program chip grants for FY 2000.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, authorize various personnel with the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services to utilize various credit card privileges for the year 2004, and the employees will be listed in the resolution.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into various lease agreements between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency and Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, effective November 1st, 2003, ending June 30th, 2004, to be paid from account 205010903451201, Building Rem. One is Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agencies for offices located at 42485 Northridge Road, Elaria. Lease is for a period of eight months, effective retroactive to November 1st, 2003, ending June 30th, 2004. The rental amount for FY 2004 is $80,863.36, or $10,107.92 monthly, for $7.41 per square foot, which is based upon the space cost report compiled by Maximus Inc. Two, Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services for offices located at 42485 Northridge Road, Elaria. Lease is for a period of eight months, effective retroactive to November 1st, 2003, ending June 30th, 2004. The rental amount for FY 2004 is $286,320.64, or $35,790.8 monthly, at $7.24 per square foot, which is based upon the space cost report compiled by Maximus Inc.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into amendment number one of the contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court for the Access Visitation Program. Said amendment is to reflect an increase in the contract value by $2,070.20, with the total contract not to exceed $34,437.52, and this was due to an allowance of federal funds to roll forward from federal fiscal year 2002 to FY 03.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, Child Support Enforcement Agency, to purchase equipment, software, and professional services from Mydell, Herden, Virginia, to establish a call center for a cost of $97,146.96, to be paid from various accounts utilizing State of Ohio Purchasing Index Number STS 073, term schedule number 573064-1.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I thought I saw Mary Lou come on. Mary Lou, can you explain what is a call center? What's that? Dee, somebody?
Actually, I brought Dolores, who's the administrator, and she's going to tell you a little bit about what the call center will do for us.
Thank you. Dee, would you give your name and spell your last name, please?
Yes. Dolores Ack, ECK. I'm the administrator of the Child Support Enforcement Agency. A call center is a system whereby telephone calls enter into a system and are handled by individuals who accept the calls and actually provide resolution to that call. Right now, we have approximately 11,000 phone calls per month coming into our department, and we have a voicemail system so that when phone calls come in and people are on the telephones, a customer cannot get through. There's a lot of frustration involved with that on both the workers' part and the public's part, because workers, of course, have to then download the messages and then call people back, and there's a certain amount of going back and forth with calls. Our intent with this call center is that we will handle, a person calling the Child Support Enforcement Agency will get a real-life person when they call, so that we can try to address that issue at that time and have a more responsive system to the public.
So will this increase the staff?
No. Well, I shouldn't say that. We will increase it by two. These will be people who will be, will call customer service specialists, who will troubleshoot some of the more serious problem calls.
And they'll be able to answer people's questions?
There will, they will, but we will also be utilizing the current staff, who will alternate daily, they'll spend an hour and a half to two hours on the call center. This is something that happens from a worker's desk. It's a matter of switching on their phone to the call center line when they're scheduled to take calls. So everyone will continue to work at their desks, but if I go on at 10 o'clock, for example, then my phone, I will switch my phone on so that incoming calls will be received on my line as well as other people. There will be a schedule, and all of this is controlled through technology, so, equipment.
Well, it sounds good, because nobody likes to get a machine on the other end when they're anxious to get answers.
That's our feeling, too.
However, is this going to be during our entire work hours?
It's going to be from 7:30 to 4:30, which are our business hours.
It's going to put an extra strain on your existing staff, is it not?
Not from my perspective. I'm hoping that it will also, it will reduce the number of calls that have to be returned, because, you know, we, we're not the only ones who have voicemail. Our clients have voicemail, too, so we get this going back and forth, so there'll be some time saved there, but there are also, I think that the, we, at my level, I get angry calls because people can't get through.
I appreciate that.
So our objective is to get, to get people through to someone who will be able to answer the questions, and through a review of the kinds of calls that we get and the state gets on its hotline, there are certain subjects that are pretty consistently brought up, and so staff will all be trained on those things, but any call that deals with a particular subject will be transferred to a worker who deals in, you know, with that, that subject.
Is this done in other counties?
Absolutely. Most, we visited Montgomery County, Summit County, and Cuyahoga County when we were researching what kind of a model to use, and we decided to use the Montgomery County model, which is also the one that the State of Ohio adopted, and they borrowed it from the private sector The Montgomery County model uses current investigators to handle the calls, because they have the expertise, rather than hiring people particularly to just do the, do the call center. They found that when, when they set it up that way, that there was a great deal of turnover, a loss of expertise anytime that happens, because it's kind of hard to sit on a phone and answer phone calls for seven and a half hours a day. So in this way, workers already are taking phone calls. They're already on the phone a certain amount. This is done also to protect their time, because often with, with the number of phone calls and the calling back and so forth, and dealing with the anger that that frustration generates, they find that, we, we think that we will protect most of their hours. If they're scheduled, if they're scheduled for an hour and a half a day, they will have the remainder of the day without phone calls, unless they generate them themselves.
Thank you, Dee.
I, I'm not sure, you know, we're hoping for the best, but we expect that it will be much better than what we have now.
Hey, thanks, Dee. Would you call a question?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve and enter into maintenance plan contract for the Windows version to the program Expenditures Tracking System for the calendar year 2004, at a cost of $1,850 to be paid from account 205010903450101, Contract Services.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve and, approve and enter into various childcare, excuse me, child daycare center contracts for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, effective January 1st, 2004 through December 31st, 2004, and you'll notice there's going to be 56 centers that will be listed in the resolution. I just didn't list them out today.
I can't imagine why not.
Maximum amount reimbursed for children enrolled in a child daycare is based on state reimbursement ceilings, and they are set for the age of the child and the amount of the time the child tends the center. Authorized Mary Lou Golsky Director to execute necessary documents on behalf of the Board with approval of prosecutors as to form.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you.
Engineer, accept on behalf of Grafton Township Trustees, the improvements and enter into a one-year maintenance guarantee agreement in the amount of $55,000 for Highland Country Estates subdivision, Grafton Township. Rob Reynolds is the developer. Highland Country Estates contains 33 lots. The asphalt pavement and drainage ditch were installed and approved by the county engineer, as well inspection, inspection fees paid, and water mines were installed from Lorraine County Rural Water Authority.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor Treasurer, accept in generalized jury tack, which is the delinquent real estate tax collection appropriation, an expenditure report is submitted by Lorraine County Treasurer and Lorraine County Prosecutor pursuant to ORC Section 321.261 for the year 2003. The amount of revenue generated to DTRAC during the report period was $484,639.54. The estimate of the anticipated revenue for the year 2004 is $449,000.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize purchase of 10 vehicles in the amount of $194,122.31 for Lorraine County Sheriff's Fleet Replacement Program. Seven will be 2004 police package Crown Victorias, and three will be 2004 Ford Tourists, non-police package will be purchased. The non-police package vehicles will go to the civil office duties that are not primarily first responders to an emergency, and the current cars will be reassigned to various areas of the fleet for continued use with no additional equipment needed.
Some move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I personally think that we should hold this until we find out what we're doing with all the added expenses we have for the year.[1777.83] We've got the board of elections, the voting equipment, we've got the Justice Center coming up and the move and God only knows what expense it is going to be in additional furniture, whatever's needed there. And then we've got the transit and the train depot, the title office and the other buildings on Broad Street. And I'm really concerned about spending this amount of money when we've already purchased in the last, since 1994, we've bought 76 vehicles for the sheriffs.
Could I address the current?
Yeah, would you please?
Yes. First of all, I hate to start out negative, but it seems like we're being questioned here after the current events here that happened lately that the sheriff's office is kind of being singled out here by a certain person, but I won't go any more into that.
I don't think so, Sheriff.
This letter that I sent over to the commissioners on November 13th explains everything that
we're doing with this program. And you're talking about a 10-year period that you purchased these vehicles over.
Right.
And we need cars to respond to calls. That's what we use.
But some of these are for non-police use.
Explain your non-police use, please.
Well, that's what we have in here, non-police use on some of these.
No, these are all police.
It says the non-police package. Maybe you can, that's the way it's listed on the agenda.
They're non-police packages is what he's saying, yes. Like the Taurus's that we're purchasing, yes, my command staff drives them. They're police officers. They respond to calls. They get called out. They're on call 24 hours a day.
How many deputies do you have?
How many deputies do I have?
Yes.
Complete road patrol and everything you're talking?
Not COs, deputies.
No, COs aren't deputies.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
I have about 63 deputies total that are sworn officers. And that includes everything. That includes my warrant squad, my dare officer, my school resource officer, my court officers, my road patrol, civil. And we're not asking any more than we need. Actually, I save the taxpayers money myself personally. I have a support car that I take home. I change my own oil in the car and rotate my own tires at no cost to taxpayers because I think that's the right thing to do for me. And, but we're not here wasting money. I can tell you, my people at the sheriff's office, and you can ask any one of them here, they call me the skinflint over there because I watch every requisition that comes in there.
Thank you, Phil.
And I do watch the overtime.
Well, I appreciate that. My concern is that, you know, a hundred and some thousand dollars here and we have all these other expenses and I'm not directing this to you, your officers, or anybody else. I am a county commissioner that watches the budget and I am concerned about the way the general fund is, the local government fund, all the additions to the buildings. I mean, we've got a lot of expenses.
And I understand that also.
I hope that you appreciate that.
And I'm also an elected official that got elected by the citizens to run my own sheriff's office.
I understand that, but I'm a budget person.
Yes, and so am I. And as a matter of fact, I'm probably going to turn in about $175,000 of my general fund money back into the budget because I watch, well, because I watch things closely.
Good, thank you, good.
And when I put in my budget last year, I requested $208,000 for vehicles. We're coming in here getting 10 of them for $194 because we are conserving money. We're looking to go to the Taurus's for the civil office to conserve fuel. But like I told you before, my officers need vehicles to respond to calls. That's what we do, Commissioner.
I understand that. I'm just saying that we purchased so many, do you, do you really, really?
Yeah, but in the, okay, we'll take on. And they don't last forever. I mean, I don't know if, you know, my cars are used a lot.
I understand.
I'll look, Captain.
We have all these expenses right now and I'm very concerned.
And I understand it.
What we've basically done over the last several years is because of Corsa several years ago coming out stating about watching vehicle maintenance, watching the mileage on the cars, we went on a five-year cycle of replacing cars. We try to get the cars out of our fleet at 150,000 miles. Reason being, we're talking safety issues, we're talking high maintenance costs. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do that because we've been short on vehicles because on the average, we probably put in over a million miles a year, which adds to the maintenance costs of our vehicles. So, what we're trying to do is if we take a patrol car, we have it for X amount of years in the patrol aspect, then we move it down to detectives, we put some more wear on it because they're not a first responder, then we move them out of the vehicle fleet. Over the tight period we're talking, we've auctioned over 25 cars to get $18,000 to $19,000 back to the county. These are cars that are still somewhat usable to the public, so we're aware of that and we're trying to bring some money back in. We're trying to recycle equipment. We went to the Taurus's last year because of the fuel situation. We downsized the staff officers' cars to a smaller car. One of the things that we saved was approximately $6,000 a vehicle because we went to a non-police package car that cost for less. This year, we expanded that. Our civil division, who drives marked cars, but they're not a road patrol response unit, which the civil division is mandated through the law to handle the paperwork, we're going to a smaller car for fuel savings because they put on a tremendous amount of mileage, but everything is stop and go. So, this year, we looked at the fact when the state bid come in through the Taurus's, the Taurus's is approximately $11,000, $12,000 a vehicle versus a full-size Crown Victoria, which is $19,000, I believe it was. So, that's why we went to the smaller cars. We're talking about $5,000 savings on three vehicles. We're taking their vehicles, which are used, and moving them back into our fleet to be used on a road patrol. What we're trying to do is just, we're guaranteeing, we want to guarantee the safety of the officers responding. We're looking at the amount of cars, we're trying to cut back on the amount of cars. Last two years, we've been looking at our entire fleet, how to cut here, how to cut there. We've had a couple of cars assigned to the corrections division because we have the work release program through the judges, we have to check on these vehicles. We're cutting back those vehicles, we're cutting back maintenance vehicles. We're trying to stick with the essentials. But unfortunately, with the amount of miles we put on the cars, we try to get five years, sometimes we only get four years. We lost a couple of cars to accidents over the years, which weren't our fault, but we lost these vehicles. Cars are quickly totaled nowadays because of the design factor. So, a car that years ago may have incurred some damage was repaired, now because of the liability and the safety factors, they're totaled out. We lose that car. So, what we try to do is utilize the cars in the best way we can. That's why this year, we came to you for 10 cars because of the cost factor for Ford Motor Company went down. We felt that this was an opportunity to bolster our fleet, not to add to it, but to bolster and get rid of some of our 94s, some of our 95s. Years ago, you read about where Aleria and Lorraine had to dump a lot of 97 Crown Victorias because of frame problems. Fortunately, because of our maintenance program, we were able to get around that situation because our cars were monitored all the time. But those cars are, some of the cars slated to be gotten rid of. We're probably looking at dumping four to five more cars before spring, before these cars even come into play because of the fact that a high mileage.
Well, there's 15 in 94 and 95 that we purchased. And you're saying that you're going to get rid of those?
We're cycling them out. What we can auction, we're auctioning off. A couple of them, we've, one of them, we donated to Joint Vocational School for their law enforcement program. Two of them were cycled down to our auxiliary, which is a volunteer unit. We utilize them at times of emergency, like that blackout situation we had. We pulled in several auxiliaries, we pulled their cars, plus any other cars we had and put them out on the streets for extra visibility to work the intersection. So, we're constantly recycling cars, but what we're trying to avoid is getting into a safety issue or a high-cost maintenance issue. That's why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay, then my question here would be, in 94 and 95, there was 15 vehicles purchased and you're saying that you will get rid of those or recycle them or whatever.
The majority of ours, we're already lost, we've already cycled them out.
So, 15 are already gone?
Over the past, I guess, over the past several years, we've cycled out 25 cars just auctioned. We've lost a couple through accidents and we've donated some. This year, we're planning to cycle out, well, we've taken out several vehicles already. This year, approximately 10 vehicles, I believe, is what my original proposal was. And we're looking at by spring, pulling another four cars out. So, we're not expanding our fleet whatsoever. What we're doing is just replacement.
Hold on, okay. I heard the sheriff say there's 63 deputies and in my mind, there was 76 vehicles for the last nine years.
We got 63, we're talking versus patrol, detectives, we're looking at the whole myriad of things here.
That's what, I thought the sheriff just said, 63 total that used the vehicles.
63 officers, correct.
So, we have a top line here of 76 vehicles and you're, and I'm trying to determine how many you said you got rid of and you said 94 and 95.
Well, when we talk about our fleet, these are vehicles, we have certain vehicles that are assigned, like I said, to the corrections division because of work release programs. We've got approximately three, three to four cars assigned to the corrections division. We've got vehicles assigned to maintenance division. We've got a couple of cars for those. So, when we talk fleet, we're talking total units, so we just don't have 75 marked cars. I think we've got approximately 46 to 50, 56 marked cars. But when we talk fleet, we're talking our entire fleet of non, you know, like instead of trucks, things like that. We go through a lot of cars, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
But like I said, our fleets, on the average, our fleet car, which are assigned to a couple officers, averaged 2,000 miles a week. So, 2,000 miles a week, you're taking toll on these cars. Years ago, we used to replace a car every 18 months because they had over 150,000 miles on it. And at that time, we were stretching it. That's why we went through a program that we get, we're getting five years out of a car plus some money coming back through auction. That's why we went to this system. We're very effective. Our system has been adopted by several other police agencies throughout the county and other counties because of the fact that we've become so effective with our cars. Plus, we don't have to worry so much about liability issues, the safety of an officer responding to a call. That was a problem years ago.
If I could add, I believe the commissioners in February this year passed that driver's risk reduction program in the policy. And one of the things that are mentioned in there, you passed it February 27th, 2003, matter of adopting changes Lorraine County Driver Vehicle Risk Reduction Program effective immediately. And it says right here, "It is a cost effective to the county to identify our exposure and implement risk control techniques to mitigate the potential loss of human and economic resources under exposure as unsafe vehicles." And I'm not going to let my officers drive in an unsafe vehicle because, you know, the liability is too great there, not only for them, but for the citizens.
Well, and on my side of it, I'm very concerned because we have all these other issues on the plate with buildings and moves and voting equipment.
And I understand that, Commissioner, but I have to run the sheriff's office, too.
And a hundred and some thousand dollars.
That's a very important office that needs to be run for the safety of the citizens in Lorraine County.
I understand that.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you.
John, we can find the money for this because it wasn't in the budget.
There is cash available if the board's so choose as to appropriate it.
Okay, thank you. Aye. Mr. Cortez, County Minister?
Well, I had it here. Commissioners, it looks like we'll be taking the barriers down off of Third Street in Aleria on the 12th of December. So, that street will be opening up. We're going to keep up the barriers around Commerce Court for a while longer, most likely until March.
And the blacktop is down for pavement?
Sure is. Sidewalks are going in, the parking lots in. As you can see, there's been a lot of site work that makes the site look more complete going on. The crews are working extremely rapidly over there trying to beat the weather to get as much done as possible because as you know, when the temperatures dip real low, we'll have to bring a lot of that work to a halt. So, they're furiously working on the south side of the building, trying to get enough work done to be able to remove those barricades so we can open Third Street and have a better traffic flow down the street. I've been greatly concerned over the cost of construction that we may have an accident out there, given the way the street is congested and the parking, but we've been lucky and haven't had one. So, we're hoping to lift those barricades and remove that potentiality. Plus, it's a good sign that we're on track and moving ahead smartly with the project. Just a little bit of information and that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ernest is the Assistant County Prosecutor.
There's two issues I'd like to discuss with the commissioners in the executive session. The first is continuation of the EPA orders from a couple of weeks ago. And then I do wish to update you on the status of the local government allocation appeal.
Commissioners, report.
Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tomorrow, Friday, December 5th, at 9:00 a.m., the Lorraine County Community Alliance will hold their final meeting for the year at Amherst Beaver Creek Reservation hosted by the City of Amherst. And our program, and I'm pleased that this program is going to be presented, Kirby Date, who is the program coordinator with the Countryside Program, which is affiliated with the Western Reserve Conservation and Development Council, will present balancing conservation and development ideas for communities. And she will be introduced by John Nizilek, who is the coordinator for the Western Reserve Development Corporation. And he'll also present an overview about what their council's scope and focus is. And I believe that all of the counties in the State of Ohio are broken up into rural development districts like this. And our county and the accompanying counties that are in our district is probably one of the last to form and be viable. So, I think there's some potential here for various of our political subdivisions. So, I'm looking forward to that. So, we have a whole agenda and we invite anybody who's interested to come along. Thank you.
Hi, ma'am.
Well, I just wanted to bring this up. Commissioner Moore, I took a little offense on the article in the newspaper when you mentioned that you weren't going to run again.
I got a lot of offense from what they wrote, too.
I wondered if these were. Yeah, I wondered.
But you should know more than me, anyway. There's always a sense of that paper.
I know. But I wondered if these were true comments because you said something about the Justice Center, reducing the Justice Center from 65 million. And I pulled a resolution from 1991, I believe. And this was before you were even here. And at that time, we estimated the cost at 49, 49,900.
99 or 91?
Pardon me?
That must have been 99.
Yeah, it was 99.
Yeah, 91, I don't think you guys were talking about it.
Anyway, I don't recall us ever having the cost at $65 million. So, I mean, I don't know where you came up with that or if the newspaper is printed in error or what, but.
I think that number was probably what they said, what I said, so.
Well, anyway, I wanted to correct that. It was only, and now it's at 45,320.
Correct.
And we started off at 49,900.
You started out at 10 or 12, you went up to 23.
No, we started off at 25 million, but it was less square footage.
I mean, I'm going to have to go back and get my March 01 articles or.
Nevertheless, look at the size of the building and I think we've really done a good job. And then you talked about 911 and we've always had testing.
No, it was, 911 was, they had over 27 turnovers in two years before I took office. It was, if you want, why don't you talk to some police chiefs and fire chiefs, see what they have to say.
Well, there's always been testing over there.
Yeah.
And things always progress as they go along.
Correct.
And then you talked about an organizational chart. We had that for every department and Clemmons and Nelsons did one for the commissioners before you were even here.
Oh, no, I've seen the organizational chart. It wasn't a very effective one either, so. And I remember bringing it out, it looked more like a, well, it wasn't a very good organizational chart, so.
Well, I guess a matter of opinion.
Yes, I'm very proud of the way county government's been run since we now have the trickle-down theory. We now know who's accountable for what.
I think we always knew that, though. I just wanted you to know that I'm disagreeing with you.
That happens once in a while.
Well, that's our rights. We don't always have to agree. It's no good if we do. Anyway, that's all I had.
Is there any old business?
None.
Mr. Moore?
No.
New business?
None.
None.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Your correspondence? I will be reading the rates.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Public comment?
Would you please give your name and spell your last name, please?
Channel APELT, A-P-E-L-T. I'm here today on behalf of Ohio Humane Education Association. And on the behalf of the organization, I am asking for a one-hour private meeting with the county commissioners only attending, hopefully to be scheduled in January, mid or late January. As Lorraine County Coordinator for this organization, I will be present at the meeting, as will Lisa Clemm, our Director of Legislation.
I think a private meeting, unless it's something to do with an executive session or some reason where we can go into executive session, can't be held. It has to be an open meeting if you have all three commissioners there.
I just want to meet one-on-one with each of us and that's usually what most people do. do.
Well, we thought, our director thought this would be the most effective way to meet with all three of you.
Well, that's about the most effective, is to schedule one day, three hours, and then one hour each, if you want, or you can have a public discussion.
What was that you responded to?
Usually, most people, what they'll do is they'll schedule three hours in an afternoon, and then they'll, you know, they'll meet with us one-on-one at that point. Unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, but fortunately, maybe the sunshine law prohibits us to meet and have discussions as a group, the three of us.
Privately, we can do it publicly.
Is that a time factor for all of you to be together for a one-hour meeting?
Not if you schedule it with the assistants.
Well, that depends on when it is. Could you meet with our, you're going to love this, but could you meet with our county administrator to address your issues?
And I'm sorry, who would that be?
Mr. Cordez.
I prefer to meet with the county commissioners concerning these issues.
I think we're all willing to meet, but it would have to be on an individual basis, unless you would prefer a public...
Did you have some comment, Jerry?
Well, I'm not sure where we're going here, but if they're going to want to meet with the commissioners and move towards some kind of decisive thing, that has to be done in a public meeting. If she wants to meet with the commissioners individually and give them information about her organization and update them, that's one thing. But if their plans are to meet and discuss substantive issues, with the objective of getting some kind of decisive action out of the commissioners, that should be done in a public meeting, period.
I also think that it's important that all three people hear the same thing. And when you meet privately, you are not always privy to the same conversation. So for any decision-making, I think it's advantageous for us to hear everything that's said, not just certain parts of it.
Does it have to be an hour, and does it have to be in private?
That is what we were hoping for. That is what the director wishes at this time.
I don't know. I don't know what to say here.
I just, I think you can talk to our Minister of Assistance, set up a schedule to come on in and meet with us. That'd be fine.
I prefer the public meeting with the entire board.
Well, I'm just saying, if someone wants to talk to you, they can come in and talk to you. That's all I'm saying.
Well, and I appreciate that. I'm not even sure what the nature of all this is, and I think Mr. Cordez has some information and is privy to it that perhaps you are not, that might address some of your concerns.
He is not privy to this information at all. This concerns Lorraine County Dog Pound issues.
I'm very familiar with the Lorraine County Dog Pound issues, and I think that he might be able to fill you in on some pieces that might be missing as you present a package.
The director is requesting that we meet with commissioners only.
Well, then you can take back to the director the conversation this morning, and you can proceed however you see fit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Madam Chair, we have some appointments. Could we go to them now? Because we have people here. We have staff who are paid.
We, I think Mary Lou wants to probably get back to...
Thank you. Actually, this, I had spoken to Mr. Cordez earlier today about a salt spreader. So it's supposed to snow tonight? I'm a little nervous.
I checked with Yvonne, she said we do have next week.
Oh, okay.
She already...
I was trying to catch your eye, and you weren't looking down there, so I was a little nervous. So as long as it's going to be on the agenda for next week.
We have one more, and it'll be next week.
Okay, thank you.
We're extremely efficient up here, Mary Lou.
Harvey? If it snows tonight, Mary Lou, you've got to do it yourself.
Yeah, we'll have to get a bunch of shovels for everyone.
There you go.
Maybe the sheriff can help us out.
Do you want to do Howard Reynolds?
Yes, I do.
Howard Reynolds? Bob, can we hold the public comments until after we have the presentation? Thank you.
Howard Reynolds, Supervisor of Office Services.
Morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow coworkers. I'm Howard Reynolds. I am the Office Services Supervisor. Now, by Office Services, it's a broad statement. Mainly, what we do is the mailing, the printing, and the ordering and delivery of paper for most of the county departments. Just a few statistics. We process mail for around 80 different county departments, averaging around 671,000 pieces a year at a cost of approximately $308,000. The general fund departments average around 35 departments. We do about 415,000 pieces, it costs about $225,000 on an average per year. We also have direct billing departments, such as your Children's Services, Dog Pound, CSDA, Humans, Job and Family Services, and other departments such as that that have their own funding, which we bill. We do process around 30 departments on the mail with 87,000 pieces, it costs around $51,000. The mail is processed the same day that we receive it and shipped down to the post office. And at the present time, we're looking at the ways that the mail is once again presorted at cost savings to the county. On the printing, we process about, printing for about 70 different county departments, average about 6, or 2,663,000 copies a year, and it costs about $85,000. The general fund, we do copies for about 30 different departments, averaging about 1,780,000 copies a year, and it costs about $65,000. The direct billing departments, we average about 35, and do about 620,000 copies, and it costs about $33,000. On the paper, we go out for bid purchase about this time every year, around November, December. We order between, along with Jobs and Family Services, which we combine our orders, we order between 2,300 and 2,500 cartons of paper per year. And it's delivered to around 55 to 60 different county departments. That's the statistics. Right now, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Demich. She's my Assistant Supervisor down in Office Services. And I have two other coworkers assisting us down there. The department, as we see it now, started in 1988, and we only had two employees down there at that time. We have progressed quite a bit since then. The mailings that we do consist of first-class, presorted, and standard A mail. The standard A mail, I should say, is like your bulk delivery, used to be bulk mail before. We primarily do the labels for the senior citizens newsletter, which goes out every month. There's approximately 13,000-plus newsletters. Overall savings from a regular rate delivery to what we send it out for is about, they save about $100,000 plus a year, just in the rate. We also do express mail, which is overnight delivery, priority mail. Certified mail, we do just certified, restricted, registered, overseas, almost any kind of certified mail you can think of. We do international letters. Also, we pick up at the post office every morning around 8:00 for the county administration building, county courthouse, and a few other departments. I figure we get approximately 1.5 million pieces a year that comes in that we sort out to the various departments. Also, we're set up to do inter-office mail. I think there's about five outlined departments that really do not have a pickup down there in there, like the coroner's office, TB clinic, and the health department, just name a couple of them, that do not really have a delivery service or anything to come into the main office for or the administration building for. The mailing, as I said, we're looking into trying to find a company that may be able to do a pre-sort for us, same-day mailing, and substantial cost savings. But I'll try and get more information on that in the future and present it at that time. The next step is our printing. We have, oh, I should say, the equipment we're using is a new system from Neopost. It's just installed in the last couple of months. It's a postage machine, it's an IJ 105, and then the software is what they call their friendship. And we also have Neotrac, which with this, we can also eliminate some manual posting of the certified mail coming in, the express mail, delivery confirmations, and whatever is barcoded on the mail that is, that comes in, we can allocate it to the various departments. On the printing, that gets into quite a different subject there. At the present time, we have a Xerox DocuTek 6135 with the cyclocure booklet maker, too. We have a Xerox DocuColor 40, which is a digital color production system. We have an old Xerox 5322, which is, I called our meter machine, that's for other departments that really don't have a copy machine, and you need to use it, come down and beat it up. We also have a Ristograph GR 3770 Highlight Color System, which we are doing our envelopes on right now, plus some other documents. With the DocuTek 6135, it runs 135 copies a minute, single-sided, which is quite efficient for us to get the amount of copy work out that we're required to do. We have just gone through an upgrade earlier this year that, with the system, which is called a Digipath. And this allows us to store almost all of our documents that need reprocessing. And we also can print to the color machine from it, and also from our personal computers at our desks. Another process in that is the Ristograph, which, like I said, we do quite a few departments printing their envelopes, almost any size, and also a lot of, it's like a backup copier for our 6135. The system that we're on right now, with the upgrades that we went through on the 6135 and the Digipath, will allow us in the future, and we're working on that right now, to be able to combine the cost of the printing on the 6135 and also the DocuColor 40 into one statement, along with the mail. What is happening right now is on the job slips that come in for the printing, we're calculating the cost of those by hand. This will be automated and eventually merged together in one statement, so that we don't have to waste our time manually processing this and inputting it, which will save us a tremendous amount of time. Along with the upgrades, we're able to, one way or another, and we're still looking into it, scanning colored copies on our scanner, which I should add, does 65 pages a minute, and be able to download to or print to our color copier or our black and white. Some of the things that we've done this year are highly attributed to Jennifer. She's been a tremendous help in designing graphics and brochures and putting everything in place. We've done, upgraded the, I think, the Call Gordon, the County Home, the Berry Bridge, to name a few, and we've done many for the commissioners and their offices. But some of these departments, all they had before was maybe two typewritten pages, different sizes, and it really looked atrocious. Now, what they have is a nice colored brochure, which most of you have probably seen around.
There's a lot...
Pardon?
There's a, it's Mary Jo up here. I know the voice must travel. Anyway, there's some of the brochures in the back that'll give them an idea of what terrific job you guys do down there.
Yes. Most of that is attributed to Jennifer because she's my computer expert down there in design, and she does a very good job on it. Excellent job. She's designed, like I said, brochures, booklets, various cards, greeting cards for Christmas time, and for the different open houses we've had, the Justice Center. I mean, a tremendous amount of work goes into these. Forgotten anything? Oh, delivery of paper. Like I said, we order in through Yvonne, who goes out for bid every year, between 2,300 and 2,500 cartons of paper. Most of the paper, except for a few departments like the sheriffs and a few others, we deliver the paper, too. We found out quite a few departments, they might have one or two guys there, or maybe none at all. So with the staff I've got, they make the deliveries, gets back in almost before I can turn around, so I really appreciate that also. Tight quarters, if any of you have been down there and seen it, so we get along pretty well, more or less have to. And hopefully, in the coming years, we can improve and even save some more money for the county. I would, I have not actually estimated totally of what our savings are, like community development for one. I think one year, they went out with their booklet, annual booklet, I think it is, annual report, they had it done outside, and I won't say how it turned out. But the next year, we did it, I think, at a substantial cost savings. And also, by us doing the processing down there, the printing down there, we have an excellent turnaround time. Now, if you're in a couple thousand sheets of one document or something like this, small documents, probably get them out next day. But if you've got a 300-page report that's all in color, double-sided, it takes a little while longer. And we try to make the best moves we can in as far as our paper purchases and everything that we do down there.
Howard, we probably don't say this very often, but we do appreciate the work that you guys do down there and the cooperation between the staffs of the different departments and your department, because I know a lot of times, it takes a couple of times before we can get the information back and forth that we want and what you, with the equipment you have. And with the staff that you have down there, it's amazing, because there's not that many of you down there, but you put out the work like a troop.
Yes, I, thank you. I appreciate that. The, that's another advantage with all the printing that we can do down there, is that if you went to a regular printer, you wanted it tomorrow, you're going to pay through the nose for it.
One way or the other, you pay for it.
Yeah. Plus, he's going to tell you, if you want it that quick, I've got to stop all the other processing, do that. Or you can wait two weeks to get the proof, and then we can run it after that. Here, where it's back and forth, like you say, almost constantly or continuously, so we get a quality product in a short amount of time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Howard?
Yes.
Jerry?
I would just like to follow up what you said, Commissioner. Sometimes we get legal documents, and big piles of them, that we have very, very little time. And sometimes Howard and the staff see me coming, I think they want to run and hide. I've written several letters complimenting them, but this is a chance to public. They do a tremendous job in helping us out. They literally stand on their heads. And I'd like to take this public opportunity to express the appreciation of the prosecutor's office for the job they do down there.
I think what, your office has come a long way, because I remember when you didn't have that equipment, and you were coming up here asking for it, practically begging, and now it's wonderful to have it.
Yes, and I want to thank the commissioners for their support in my department down there also.
It's worth it. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Howard.
Who's next?
Larry Allen of Budsmann.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Larry.
Morning, Larry.
Morning. Start by saying that I am the Lorraine County...
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Larry.
Morning, Larry.
Morning, everybody. Start by saying that I am the Lorraine County Ambusman. And what is an ambusman? The ambusman office was established under the authority of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners to examine, to investigate questions and complaints concerning actions, conduct, and decisions by the county departments and officers. The ambusman is a designated neutral and impartial dispute resolution practitioner who provides independent, confidential, and informal assistance to reporting individuals. And I like to make sure I, make sure everyone understands it's confidential in my office because 95% of the things I do is dealing with someone's life and they don't want their business out in the street. But what they ask and the questions that I have to go check on, if they don't give me their written release to talk to the agencies, I can't get the information that I need to try to help resolve the issue. The tasks and the skills necessary to execute this office includes thorough examination, investigation of the reports, complaint, reported complaints and questions, mediation, conflict interest, conflicting interests, issuing of written reports and recommendations, and ultimately be an advocacy for fairness. I get a lot of calls telling me that they don't feel that they're being heard or they don't feel that things are being done on their case or someone has done something or they're giving out their private information to people who don't need it. And I get a lot, 95%, of that 95% of my confidential information, I would say 70 to 85% comes from Children's Services. And they deal with the obligee and obligor. And before I did this job, I didn't know what obligee and obligor was. So, and when they would tell me on the phone, I'm the obligee. I said, okay. And the obligor won't do this, okay? And this, this, and this. And really, I didn't want to sound stupid, but I would say, now, when you said the obligor wouldn't do this, why isn't he doing it? Well, my ex is, oh, now, I understand. This is my ex, he's not doing this. And I said, have you talked to your caseworker? I tell them when they call, I need a lot of information. I need their case number, I need their social security number. I need them to describe what has happened, who they have talked to, what's going on, what they feel they want as a resolution to this problem. And a lot of times, you hear just one side and they say, they won't do this, they won't do that. And I said, well, there's always two sides to every story.
Larry, I think you also need a waiver that you can speak with.
Yes, I said that earlier, that I need to get their signature, signed release to get information from them. So.
Did you mention Children's Services? They have Steve down there. You mean child support?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, child support. I think I said child, didn't I? Okay, child support.
You're back to Obladie, Obladada Beatles tune, I think.
Excuse me?
You're back to Obladie, I think, that's when you got confused.
No, obligee is the one who wants the money and obligor is the one who has to pay the money. So. The services, you know, you serve as a designated neutral. They think that I'm able to go over there and pound somebody and make them, give them their money or make them do something. And I tell them all the time, I don't have that authority. That's not what the job entails. I try to find a happy medium that everybody can get along with. A lot of times, they're not going to be happy with, because there's rules and regulations that even with their, they may be right in what they're thinking, but the rules and regulations still say, I have to follow these rules and this is what has to happen. As I was saying, the task and skills necessary is just to be able to listen a lot of times to what they're saying. Serving as a designated neutral, the ambusman is neither an advocate for the reporting person. I can't be the person to say, I'm your lawyer, to go over there and argue your case. And I get that a lot of times in children's service, child support. And the reason that is, I get child support, Children's Services questions too. I relay them, I send them to Steve Chosinski, who is the ambusman for Children's Services. Because a lot of people think that I'm supposed to do Children's Services work and they won't talk to me. And I tell them it's not actually under the county. Why isn't it then? I have to explain, they have their own funding source, they do what they have to do. They have their own board, you have to go through them. You have to go through Steve Chosinski. And they don't seem to see the difference at times. They don't want to talk with Steve or they don't know who Steve is. He's not as visible, they say, as I am or whatever. But it's a lot of times we have, Steve and I work together on certain issues. Nor am I an apologist for the county. Rather, he is the advocate for fairness who acts as a source of accurate information. I try to get as much information as I possibly can before I get back to the person. One of the things I will try and do, a lot of times, especially in child support, I'll find out who the caseworker is. I'll go to that caseworker supervisor. I'll try to find out what's going on, get printouts of what's been said to that person and everything. And then we'll make a three-way conversation where I'm sitting there with the caseworker and I can get the complaining person on the phone or have that complaining person come into the office and we all three sit down and try to resolve their situation. Deac is very helpful. She gave me a supervisor who helped me in, not only the obligee and obligor is there a problem with, then you have the custodial parent, the non-custodial parent. You have the, they have more things going on just in that one department where they have all kind of brochures that they have printed. And a lot of times I ask, do you know what your rights are? And they'll say, no. There's a folder for them out of Children's Services, which I have in my office and which I have tried to give it out and send to people when they call and ask what their rights are. Even for SSI, it's in here and what they should be asking at a hearing and different things like that. Who and what type of services can they deal with? Another thing that child support has, it has how to get your cases modified. They think that I can be able to go in and change their caseworker. They think I'm able to go in and change the support order. I can't do any of that. But it does tell them in this brochure how to get their case modified and what modifications can be done, what administrative services they will do for you and everything. Other things are, last, in the last six months, I would say, I have had maybe eight to 22, maybe 25 cases where there's a question of who is the father of a child. There's a brochure for that too, to establish paternity. They didn't know, a lot of little people did not know that this is a service that the county, that Children's Service will do for them. They don't always have to go to court for it. Sometimes they do. And generally, this happens when this child is becoming emancipated. And what happens here is this. They think that because, at least the father does, feel that, okay, he's 18 now, he's out of school, or he's getting ready to graduate, or she's getting ready to graduate, I shouldn't have to pay child support anymore. I don't even believe this is my child anymore. And I said, well, here what we can do. We start off by, here's what you can do about paternity. The other thing is, your wife has to send in some information so that these things can be taken care of and addressed. Well, why do I have to worry about her? Like I said, I don't believe it's my child. It's nothing I can do. We're 18 years down the pike when you should have said something back way then. But it happens once in a while. And like I said, the last six months, about 22 cases, up to 25 cases have came in that way. The ambusman cannot, I mean, he can request information, documents, or files from the county departments, officers, employees. And he does have, he does not have subpoena power. The ambusman can scrutinize administrative actions, including decisions, refusals, and failures to take actions and administrative procedures. The ambusman is not authorized to investigate actions of private companies. I get people who call and tell me that they got fired from their job. Can you find out why? They work for so-and-so. I can't make a company rehire you, I can't find out those reasons for you. Individual healthcare providers, I can't question doctors. Actions taken in connection with clinical judgments by doctors. Reserved functions of local authorities. I get a lot of calls saying that the mayor won't talk to me. I can't get solicitors so-and-so, I can't get law directors so-and-so to talk to me. It's nothing I can do. I even have people call and say, knows who's flexing on your sheriff? That I can't even talk to the sheriff. Again, I can't make the sheriff talk to you. You have to call and meet the qualifications or requirements that they're asking out there to talk to him. I have a couple cases where people came in and said, I want to be able to see my child, but the sheriff won't let me. Again, I say, I can't help you there. I can call and ask when visiting hours, but I can't make them let you see your child or whatever. Court decisions or matters pending in litigation. I get people who'll call and say, I have to go to court for a DUI. Can the commissioners go and talk to Judge so-and-so? Or are you able to go talk to Judge so-and-so? No, I'm not, and no, the commissioners will not do that also. They don't believe it, sometimes they get upset with me. Matters with the facilitating of, the running of the correctional facility. I have nothing to do with the correction. I get people say that the sheriffs don't feed my son good meals. My daughter good meals. I said, okay, I take the complaint down, it's nothing I can do.
Larry, in short, the ambusman is really a person that intercedes between the resident and the agency. But you're only working for county agencies. You don't really work for, you're not biased, in other words.
I try to stay neutral at all times.
An ambusman is not biased, you have to stay neutral. So people sometimes have the impression that because you're hired by, say, the commissioners, if they have a complaint against the commissioners, that you would be biased. That is not a fact. But you do the, more or less like investigations to review complaints.
Exactly.
And do you have some of those brochures in the rack downstairs so that people can pick them up?
Yep, I have them, yep, they can come and pick them up at any time. How effective is the ambusman? I think this would answer your question is, the effectiveness of the ambusman is a product of the perception of the public and the acceptance and support of the county commissioners. The ambusman must be committed to the defense and protection of the integrity of the process. The process and the position are both strengthened each time a reporting individual feels that he has been heard and his concerns have been seriously addressed, explained, and resolved, whether it's favorable or unfavorable. It is beyond the scope of the authority of the ambusman to implement any given resolutions because I have that, not that power. And this is a reporting and advisory position only. Any questions?
Yeah, you're the middle man between the agency or the, and the person.
Exactly.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No, you did a, you've been doing a good job, gotten a lot of compliments. The bottom line here is when it comes to government, a lot of times people don't know who to call.
Yeah.
And a lot of times Larry will take those calls. And whether they're in other elected officials' departments or not, usually we get resolutions. Even though you just said, you said a lot of things, I know, really, when you're talking about other elected officials, whether or not you can help, you do, you do help. You call them up and you bottom line it and get back to the person.
I try to.
And I know, and I appreciate that, so, thanks, Larry.
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. I think the ambusman, I can't talk. The position is a very important one. I just want to be sure that I understood one thing about what he, what he can and cannot do. He, when the mean old sheriff won't let somebody see their child or isn't feeding this people properly, I want to be sure that the ambusman person sees that that person knows what to do about it, whether he can do anything about it. I often had the experience years ago when I was Legal Liaison for my organization. People would call me about any and everything, things that had nothing to do with individual rights and so on. But I always found it was helpful to tell them how they could get help if I knew any way they could. And I hope that's what he does too.
I can say this, I have been able to call Sheriff Stemedy's office. When I talk with him, he will address the situation. And Debbie Stinko is very, very helpful when I call out there and say, Debbie, I have a problem, this person said this, this, this. I have people calling me from Cleveland, they want to see when they came out here and they didn't know that they couldn't see him, is it a possibility? Debbie seems to be able to help get the situation resolved some way for me, so.
And we do have regular visitation hours out there. And to tell you the truth, I haven't seen any inmates losing any weight.
That may be the wrong diet.
Unfortunately, Sheriff, I think you see what happens when you sit real close.
Bernie Smith, IT Director.
Well, Sheriff, just in case you have to leave before Bernie is done here, I just noticed that you took some offense by me questioning the vehicles. But I want you to get that thought out of your head because if you remember, I questioned him last year and you reduced the number of vehicles then. And maybe I was hoping that you would reduce the number this year.
And I didn't take any offense to a commissioner, but I just, I guess I wanted to explain that, you know, you're looking at a 10-year process and, you know, vehicles were out, especially when you're doing police work and road patrol work.
But you know me by now, I question everything.
Yes, I understand that.
You're no different than anybody else, in my opinion. I have to question you too, especially when it comes to almost 200,000 votes.
I have no problems with that. But like I say, that's part of my operation, that's what we do there.
I understand that too.
Okay, thank you.
We both have our jobs. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Public. Hurry Smith, and as such, I'm the Information Technology Director. Manage the Information Technology Department and the Telecommunications Department. I have seven employees working for me. I have two that manage the IT department, work in the IT department, excuse me. Provide network server and PC support. I have three employees that maintain the telephone system, to include the phone and fax lines. And two employees that work the county switchboard. We directly control a total of six servers. Have one file server for files that manage for multiple departments. One backup domain server contains a replica of the security and control settings. One email server that also manages the Help Desk program. Two virus software servers located on two different floors for security and management purposes. And one server that manages the Internet content filtering software. It filters out undesirable Internet content for us. We maintain the Help Desk, which supports the IT Department, the Telecommunications Department, and the Maintenance Department. All service calls for these departments are filtered through the Help Desk and we support that operation. We directly support all of the Commissioners' departments, to include the purchasing, community development, Veterans Office, Ambusman, Board of Elections, Record Center, et cetera. The Information and Technology Department. Several of these departments and agencies also have their own computer networks and are located outside the Administration Building. For example, the Workforce Development has a network which includes 68 PCs, two servers, and two large laboratory classrooms with the unique software. And that organization is physically located across town on North Ridge Road that we also support. Support requests vary. Support can be anything from a question or a meeting concerning IT to request for complete network setup, as was the case with the new Community Development Building and the Justice Center Construction Manager's Office. There are approximately 200 PCs and 18 servers at these different locations. My staff and I provide support for this hardware, which when requested can be called upon to assist with this hardware and software at any time. to assist with this hardware and software at any time. And you'd never really know what you're going to run into. 20 cards. It services 1,264 telephone lines and numbers. Total of 19 buildings with 80 departments. Also, we have the Octel voicemail system and battery backups to ensure that that system stays up 99.99% of the time. The Telecommunications Department also manages some unique phone systems other than the Mitel system. The Board of Elections, Airport, Domestic Courts, Gates Building, and Lorain County Transit are examples of those that have unique telephone systems other than the Mitel that we also are called upon to support. Telecommunications also manages and maintains video equipment, security cameras, PA systems, lines for ATM machines, credit card machines, various alarms where money is handled in the courts and in the courts, cash registers, food and stat machines, and for the payphones Telecommunications also manages and maintains the necessary circuits for telephonic connectivity to the various buildings supported by the Mitel phone system and account call distribution centers for the Auditor, Treasurer, and Children's Services. Some upcoming and ongoing projects for the Telecommunications Department is the Justice Center. It's going to be a lot of work going on there to expand the phone system into the Justice Center. We're already doing some background work, realigning some people, their phone numbers and their configurations to the correct equipment that'll be moving into there. Visitors Bureau, as I mentioned, the Telecommunications is working with the IT Department to set up the network and the telephone system in there. Also doing a lot of work out at Job and Family with their new Call Distribution Center, which we heard about this morning. There's been a lot of background work going on there to make sure that we get the right equipment without going too far with it, give them exactly what they need. A lot of research has been done to make sure that we get that right equipment and research the changes. There's a lot of background work that needs to be done because this will integrate with the current Mitel phone system. And then the meetings with the vendors and the users of the system. And last but not least, have the two switchboard operators that sit upstairs all day and answer that telephone. They average 75 calls an hour up there. They need to have familiarity with all the departments and agencies so they can forward telephone calls and be prepared to handle all types of calls and attitudes to take care of the public. That's all I have. Unless there's any questions for anybody?
Anybody have any questions for Ernie?
I don't have a question, but I would like to thank Ernie for his assistance pushing my shop with the upgrades that we're going through with the PCs and the Japan, working with Xerox and Neopost. He's gone through the pinch almost every time that we've needed him, and usually we'd need him right now. So I want to thank him for his assistance.
Thank you.
Sometimes our departments don't get their recognition as often as they should, but they are appreciated.
You don't ever hear people walking around saying how good their computers are working.
But it's always the computer, not the IT department. Thanks, Ernie. You do a great job.
Okay, let's go back to public comment. Bob, I think you were up there.
My name's Robert Kish, and I try to be the conscience of this group. I'm not too successful so far. Maybe I'll have a little further comment on it today. The shirt I'm wearing has to do, there are people who seem to be displeased that we defeated the Japanese by using an atomic bomb. But you don't hardly see as much newspaper coverage anymore as the day of December 7th, the day that'll live in infamy, according to Franklin Delano Roosevelt. We right now, in this very community, have got a mini skirmish going on. The county hasn't spoken out on it. The city has. I am not a spokesman for the veterans. I was too young to be in World War II. I lost one of my friends from World War II who was older on the beaches of Omaha. I've spoken of Rudy before. There is controversy in this city now as to where they're going to put, or if they're going to put the monument to the different services, and they evidently do not want it in the park, in the square. Which brings me to another point. I do recall in this very room when a bid was turned down because the bid was not high enough for the landscaping of the Justice Center. Is it at all possible that the Justice Center, with liberty and justice for all, can possibly be used as a site to place this monument? They are not asking for money. They're just asking for a site. They would represent all the county residents, not just the city of Elaria. I don't know. I do know one thing. With liberty and justice for all, there's a word I like to add to that, a couple of words I add to different phrases that I'm familiar with. The living, who are being wounded today, and the dead. In addition to Rudy Adamek, my brother-in-law has passed away. He was wounded in the forest of Germany. And yet, before he was wounded in the forest of Germany, he spoke of Christmas Eve, which is coming close. And he spoke of the night on Christmas Eve when the firing stopped, and they sang Silent Night. And amazingly, from the other side, they heard Silent Night. Now, after that, many more individuals never heard another Silent Night. And I'm not sure just what is taking place today. For those who have given, well, they're forgotten. And they're not here to complain, especially if they have died. But somehow, it seems that those who have given should be honored. And if the city is not willing, and I don't know if they're willing or not, perhaps the county can take it upon themselves to include this monument between the courthouse and the Justice Center. That's it.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Man, Chair, I move we go into executive session for the purposes outlined by the county prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Vacy.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
The Assistant County Prosecutor.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elaria. November 20th, a group of about 70, including the commissioners, judges, and staff members, took a progress tour of the new Justice Center. The building is scheduled to open summer of 2004.
Please watch your step. This will be the parking area. Right now, it's doing well for housing a lot of materials that are for the construction. As we progress through here, this will be the secure Sallyport area. All prisoners will come in, the vehicles, they'll go into this area. The doors will come down. It'll be totally secure. From here, the prisoners will enter the holding facilities. This is a secure corridor. Upon call, the prisoners will be transported to either the secure elevator at this end of the corridor or the secure elevator at that end of the corridor. From there, they'll go up to their secure holding cells on each courtroom floor. Right now, we're going to enter the holding facilities. The main room, that's the center. The island is the control room. All operations of the secure facilities will be through this room. And rooms for attorney and clients, attorney-client conference rooms. Anything else down on that end of the building is basically mechanical rooms for the HVAC equipment, right in this room. This is the main chiller room. This is where all the air conditioning equipment is housed. And as we continue through here, this is the public elevators. We have three public elevators that'll access the basement through the seventh floor, except for the fifth floor. There's no stopping at the fifth now until the future buildout's complete. We're on the first floor now. This is the main entrance lobby.
As you see, we have the balcony around the second floor. They'll have a glass rail. We will have, then, right in this zone, what we call our secure zone, which includes metal detectors, next wave machines. Everyone will be going through this entrance on the way into the building. When you come into this courtroom, this is semi-secure. You go through a door here in the back, you will be in a secure zone. The public will basically stay out in that front corridor area.
Right now, we'd like to go ahead and take you back into the back rooms where the court chambers and things will be, so please follow me.
The conferencing area is here. There also may be one room that may be a victim waiting room. Just kept aside for the waiting. The only difference between this floor and the seventh floor, the seventh floor has a view further, looking out further, that's all. This is the, what we call the domestic relations floor. The floor seven is the general division floor that has four judges on that floor. The sixth floor includes two more court, three more courtrooms, actually. One courtroom is for the probate court, and then the probate clerk's office is the far south end, running the entire south end of the building. And the fifth floor is white. It's an empty floor that'll be used for future. We built this building for future expansion up to the year 2025. It'll just be left open or loose for storage, or just left open or empty. Again, open office space in the middle that'll have workstations. So we divide it up into those three different departments. The last one will be civil, which will be down the south end of the buildings. Again, carpet floors, pad walls.
Is that an elevator?
That is an elevator.
So good.
That's an elevator that accesses the floor all the way from the basement and goes all the way to the house.
Folks, for those of you who look up at ceiling tile and wonder what's on the other side, and if this is a good example of where the money's spent. The cable tray here runs tell-a-dah through the entire building. All of the piping, you have domestic water piping, chilled water piping, hot water piping, forced air ductwork. We have several mechanical rooms in the building.
Obviously, we're looking at first floor again with our balcony, and we're going to be going through the magistrate areas along with our hearing rooms, magistrate hearing rooms. But again, this is, for the most part, what we call our domestic relations floor. Again, the majority of people coming to this court, judges, I assume, would be kind of just limited to these first two floors. And we did that intentionally. Though we have great elevators, probably about three times faster than the elevators in the Administration Building, something like that, no? Anyway, we even have a monumental stair here, so people can use the stairs, just so they don't want to use the elevators, they don't have to. We do have the three high-speed elevators. We're doing excavation work on the outside. The inside, some of these walls, we just walked by, it's been painted already, and we're starting to see the grit. So all kinds of activities are happening in this building.
Right now, we're running at full speed ahead. As I've mentioned before, we run anywhere from 150, 175, and more men and women on the site each day. Most of those are Lorain County men and women that are building this building.
I am very excited about this new space that we have here, courtesy of the Board of Commissioners for Lorain County. We are now located in our new office. Today has been our open house ribbon cutting.
Welcome, everybody. The sun is shining on Lorain County today. Five years ago, our priorities on economic development were in the basement. Hey, but this year.
Low, low.
Low, low. But this year, we have invested 10 times of that of 1997. This building represents the Lorain County Commissioners' commitment to improving the quality of life for all its citizens, and now our economic priorities are the envy of northeast Ohio. Commissioner Vansley?
I just want to thank you for the honor of your presence here today. And, you know, when I just took office, we had a two-man department in economic development. Today, we're up to 12 and a standalone building, and I think it's just wonderful. And I want you to know, too, the carpeting that you're going to walk on in there was provided by Solid Waste. It's, what, 40% recycled material? And when you walk on that, you'll know that someone recycled in Lorain County. Hopefully, we'll get more people to do that. But thank you again for being here, and it's a pleasure to have you.
Thank you for coming this morning. About 10 years ago, as Commissioner Vacy said, although it was never a two-person economic development department, when I got here, it was a one-person show, and we had a planning commission. And the idea was conceived that we ought to join those two departments together and form the Lorain County Community Development Department, which we did. And then we got Ron Twining, our Community Development Director, who's done a wonderful job, together with Jim Cordez, our county administrator, and this wonderful staff that you see here. And we're doing great things for Lorain County. Thank you so much for coming this morning.
I'd like to thank everybody for showing up today, especially we have some elected officials here from Amherst, our auditor, Diane S. White, thank you for attending. Our state senator, Jeffrey Armbruster, thank you for attending. Elaria City Councilman, Paul Levins, thank you for attending. Our Lorain County Sheriff, Sheriff Stemick, thank you again for attending. And most of all, I'll thank you all for attending here. Also, I'd like to thank the people that worked on this project. What's interesting here is this building, you know, we purchased it, within a year, we had the architects, was Joseph Ferret and Chase Keichl from Joseph Ferret and Associates, the architects. Steve Fox of SNM Fox Construction, restroom renovation, and ADA door opener. The Puffrey Roofie, Tom Murray and Amy Monak of Bobble's Office Plus and Office Space Design. Pat McCarthy, Dupont Flooring Systems Carpet Installation.
Pat McCarthy, Dupont Flooring Systems Carpet Installation. The Refrigeration Specialist, Inc. for the HVAC, and the Locks Garden Center for the plants. And the beauty of this is, all this work, except for the recycled carpeting, but the labor was here, was all done with Lorraine County people, with Lorraine County money. So that's fantastic, that that's what this board's all about. And also, who participated in putting this thing together, I'd like to thank Jim Cordez, our county administrator. I'd also like to thank Yvonne Newton, Pam Stevens, and Karen Davis. Also, our maintenance crew. These guys don't get recognized enough. Ralph Smigala, Dave Karpinski, and their whole crew of Herb, Rick, Gordon, Joe, Zed and Don, Chad, James, Mike, Brian, Michael, and Thomas. They did a lot of work here to get the job done right. Also, these are other county people that helped us, with Dan Billman, and Marilyn Poliski, Ernie Smith, Karen Pleben, Nancy Bryant, Tim Cosco, Joey Updike, Boyd Weber, B. Howard Reynolds, and Jennifer Demick. They did a lot of work to make this thing happen today. Oh, and Marcia Dumpfunk for Bromville Township Clerk is here, too. So thank you. I think it's time to cut the ribbon. Do we have our scissors?
Ready?
Are we all ready, guys? One, two, three. There we go. We have lots of refreshments, videos, the people we'll be talking to, please come in and walk around and see what we have here.
This location is at 216 Third Street. We moved from the county administration building, which is virtually across the street, so we're still close to them and the records that we need access to, and close for citizens to park in a county parking garage and walk across the street to get any help and assistance here. We house, in addition to the lamp program, the Port Authority is located here, operating out of our office. We also have the revolving loan fund, tax abatement issues. All of these matters come to this building, and we welcome visitors at any point to come in. Our office hours, Monday through Friday, eight o'clock in the morning, and we typically close at 4:30. A lot of citizen meetings are held. We have two outstanding conference rooms, one large one that will accommodate about forty-five people, and then a smaller one that is a little friendlier, down to about six or eight people that could be accommodated in there. We're real excited about the opportunity the Board of Commissioners have provided us, through the gracious funding of the residents of Lorraine County. We look for great things to come in this new space.